Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission's study session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. In accordance with the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. The public is encouraged to view the meeting using one of these options. The Leavenworth City Commission meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To attend a meeting in person, email C. Williamson@firstcity.org. No later than 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting to reserve a seat. Seats are available on a first-come, first-served basis. Face coverings are optional when attending the meeting. If you are not attending the meeting but would like to submit comments on an agenda item to be read during the discussion on that topic, email your comments to C. Williamson@firstcity.org. No later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. First item on the study session is the semi-annual report from the University of St. Mary. Here. Either is okay. I think both mics are on. Not sure.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. It's wonderful to be able to start gathering in person again. So we're happy to report that we did graduate between the raindrops. We held two different hooding ceremonies, two different graduation ceremonies, and three pennings. But we got everybody in. So we did it with seating because usually McGillie Hall can usually hold about 2,000 people. So if we mitigate, we were down to 580. So every graduate got two tickets, and it was livestreamed. And we also livestreamed it into Ryan Gym. So if we had extra family members, they could gather there. And we were blessed between the raindrops. We got down and back both times. So we are very grateful for that. And the students were just thrilled that they could finally gather again. When we hooded our undergrads, we always hooded the undergrads, and we did it this time up at St. Francis Church. That was the first time we had gathered since September of, let's see, 2019.
Wow.
That was our fall convocation. And so we missed everything last year. So it is also, it's going to be a very healing summer, I think, because normally all school years have a natural rhythm. And after graduation, every breeze sighs relief, gets a little rest, and then we start planning. Faculty recover. Last year, it took off in March, and it just kept going. So, and I wanted to thank you again for your help and the funds you helped secure for us for testing. To date, we have spent over $1.1 million keeping our community safe with testing, PPE, and hotels. So it's been a major undertaking. So we're very grateful for your support in that effort. In the midst of that, we did welcome a record class, a record freshman class. So we are very happy about that. And we're looking to have another record freshman class. In fact, we are scrambling quickly to put bedrooms on the ground floor of Maria because we are out of space.
Why do you think that is?
I think that students want a personalized education that's face-to-face. So I think that's, our healthcare programs are booming. I think that's part of it as well. We have had to build another physics lab and another biology lab, two other biology labs. So I think that's part of it. People are also coming because they want to be in the doctorate in physical therapy. And now they're coming because they want to be in the doctorate of occupational therapy. So that's also helping. So the healthcare move has gone well. When sports teams do well, that helps recruiting. Our cross-country team is very successful. They've won the conference about eight years in a row. They took, the men took fifth at Nationals, and then the women took 10th. They, just the two track teams just won the track, outdoor track. And they're headed down to Gulf Shores, Alabama, for Nationals. So we've had a very successful track team. And we're hoping our football team recovers. They had a rough year, as we'd say. In that, we're also grateful that we've been able to partner with our local bowling alley. And we will have a collegiate bowling team starting next year. So it's one of those lifelong sports that, once people have it, they tend to keep it. We have also reinvigorated our band. So it will start as a pep band, and we hope it'll grow into a marching band. And it will be scholarshiped the same way sports are. Looking for another alternative to say, if I don't play a sport, what else can I do? So we try to support our fine arts the same way we support athletics. So to keep that balance of humanity and art. So very grateful for that. Our swimming pool, which has been around since Berkman's in 1930, has come to an end. We're building a cadaver lab.
I heard that. Wow.
So we will have, this year, we'll have eight cadavers. Then it will eventually grow to 12.
You're not looking for volunteers here.
Commissioner, just put that little tag on your toe. That'll be great.
That's what the socks were for.
Ours are going to, cadavers, we're working with the University of St. Louis. And there's a great deal of respect and dignity and protocol that comes with taking in the bodies, welcoming the bodies with prayer, and then musing the bodies. And so the pool area, because it will be sealed, gives us a perfect place to do that. Our biggest expense in fixing it is the HVAC because the air has to circulate every three to four minutes. They don't use formaldehyde, but they still stink.
They don't, not anymore.
No, it's something else, but it still stinks. As a theologian and an English teacher, I don't plan to spend much time down there. But we, when our OT is fully up and running, we'll have 500 students a year using the cadavers. We were renting cadavers down in, Cadaver Lab in Kansas City for a month for $30,000. So the ability to have our own cadaver on lab, and then we're also going to be able to let the high school students use it, you know, under supervision. And again, helping them understand this is where you could go if you are interested in healthcare fields. Because there's, our nurses are thrilled, because I'm not a nurse, because they tell me that putting in a chest tooth, much of what they were doing during COVID, is so different on even the high, the high-ranking, you know, mannequins we have versus a human. It's so different. So they're thrilled about our nurses being able to practice on those who have generously donated their remains so that we could do this. So we're really looking forward to that. And that'll be up and running as well. So our occupation, Doctorate in Occupational First Class will start in June as well. So that'll be our third doctorate. So it's Doctorate in Physical Education, Occupational Therapy, and then the Doctorate in Education. So the three doctorates are all up and running. We're happy to say that we are back in the prison, the Lansing Correctional Facility. We're part of Second Chance Pell, which is always deep in our hearts as Vincentians. It was very dear to St. Vincent de Paul. And before the Pell Grant was taken away with the Bradley Bill back in the 80s, we were in all of the prisons. So that was when I was teaching. So it's very, very much fits with our mission. And we're very excited to be back in there. And we're teaching computer information technology. So very excited about that. We're also launching our Bachelor in Social Work this fall. And the Master's in Social Work will follow the following fall. Again, building out those healthcare and trying to meet the needs. That's a huge need right now for Masters in Social Care, Clinical Social Care Workers. So we're very excited about that. We are also going to participate in the state legislature passed the Last Dollar Scholarship. They are, it's for a associate's degree. And it will be the last dollars, and it could be up to what you would pay if you were at a community college. And so we have an associate's degree in computer technology that they could use that for, and then go on to get their bachelor's. And then they would have to spend two years working at Kansas. But they're Kansas residents, so this is a great idea. So we're very excited to be able to participate in that as well. So we're looking for another booming class. What we're doing for COVID next year is Community Immunity. That sounds better to me than herd immunity. I'm from Montana and I've been around cows too often. So we're going Community Immunity. And so basically, the restrictions that we have in place for COVID will lessen as we hit 75%. And we will do it as an entire university, and then we also do it by teams. So if your team wants to travel without their mask on, they've got to hit 75% vaccination. And if your team wants to all be in the locker room at the same time, 75% vaccinated. So it's really, it's up to the students to make some choices. And so there's always a little bit of peer pressure that will help that along as well. But we're very, this semester was so much easier for us and went so much smoother, more smoothly. I don't think there was ever a time we had over three or four positives at a time. We were able to test weekly because we had the antigen test. The PCR tests were $75, the antigen tests were $5. So we could, we were testing them all of the time. So when the students do return, we will do the PCR test again. And we will also continue with our antigen testing when necessary. And we'll PCR test them immediately. And we're working with the Leavenworth Public Health. He has been amazing. I can't say enough about Jamie and crew, as well as Chuck and Leavenworth Public Management. They have been amazing to work with and just wonderful community partners. So I want to publicly thank them and recognize them for working with us. They made my job a lot easier. So very grateful for all of that. And so I would be grateful to take your questions if there's anything you wonder about what St. Mary's up to these days.
I just have one question. When you're talking about the cadavers, I have been set up to donate my body to KU. Can we, can people donate their body to St. Mary's?
I don't know that it tends to come directly to us because we don't process them. But we'd like to say that we have credit for one.
Okay.
So I don't know, I don't know, Ms. Mary, but I will get back to you. Because we have sisters who have asked. Yeah, I don't know how that works. But education is always grateful when people do donate.
Well, that's exciting because I had, when I was in science there, I had, we had to work on cats. We didn't have any. That segues into our feral cats.
We will no longer be purchasing cats. Is there anything else, any other questions I could answer for you?
I have, so the graduation ceremonies last Saturday were for the class of 2021?
Yes.
Could you, what happened to the 2020? You know, because we were.
Well, we put on our regalia, and we read the names, and we conferred degrees virtually. And we did the bi divisions. And then the.
And that was last spring? Yeah, last spring. Okay, I just couldn't remember.
It was not nearly as fun. But we did what we could. It was all virtual.
Couldn't remember exactly what was done.
Sister Diane, what was your, you said you have a record class again? Or freshman class? What was that?
It was 198, and we had 255 altogether, new students.
Okay, great.
So we're, we continue to be around 1,200.
That's good.
That's good.
Parking is always a happy problem.
Well, that's a good problem.
It's a good problem. It's a happy problem. Mr. Price?
My question was on enrollment. Just answer that. Other one is, obviously, you're closing the pool. Are you opening another pool?
No.
Not, so that won't have a pool available?
No, actually, our swim team swims down at Lansing.
Okay. And I heard your COVID, you're going with Community Immunity. And I'm not recommending this, I'm just asking this. I know some schools, a few schools on the East Coast, I think specifically private schools are, if they want the students, they require students, if they're going to be in-person students, must have vaccinations. Do you know of any other schools doing that? Or is that a rarity?
As far as I know, we are the only school in Kansas doing much of anything at this point. The other private schools have not come out and said they're doing anything as far as next year. But we also share the campus with the sisters. And so we are, we're very diligent in keeping our community safe. That's a top priority.
And on sports, on some, you know, close-contact sports, on things specifically wrestling, possibly basketball, maybe even football, does the Athletic Association, I know you're not part of the NCAA, if, I don't know if you're, am I? NAIA. Do they have any requirements now with COVID that, you know, these teams must be vaccinated?
They did, but they only, NAIA only gave specifications for championship level. And the Kansas, our, we belong to the Kansas Collegiate Athletic Conference, and they had protocol about testing before and after you got on the bus, testing for symptoms. There was probably about, the schools in the conference, there were three or four of us that were constantly testing.
Okay, so they handle by testing, not by vaccination requirements?
They haven't done it yet, and I doubt they will. My guess is it will be us and maybe one other school that will vaccinate.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The programs inside of the prisons, you said it's computer technology?
Yes.
Can you expand on that? Like what all, like what's the process and individuals interested in it? Is it in the max facility, minimum facility?
Both, because we are now, we have a full-time person in there. Her name is Michelle Workman. And her job is to recruit, enroll, advise, and work with them on a regular basis. Most of them have some education already. And if they don't, they should be going to Donley for the first two years because Donley's also in there. And if Donley can't provide the undergrad course, we will. Because we're looking to grow the program because it's near and dear to our hearts.
That's good, thank you.
I have one more question. Number of, just generally, the number of undergraduates, like for this coming school year, how many undergraduates at University of St. Mary? And which percentage of those live, like, off-campus?
We will probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 715 to 720 traditional undergrads. And we can only house 316 on the main campus. So we're looking to build.
And the ones that don't live on campus have to go?
They're all, they're in apartments and houses. So they're great for the economy.
Thank you.
We had four in our neighborhood in one house last year. Not a peep out of them. It was great.
That's good to know.
Any other questions? Well, we appreciate you coming, Sister.
Well, thank you for inviting me. And please, we're open for business, so come visit us. And Commissioner, we'd love to visit about your thoughts about how we can help with the prison?
Yes, ma'am, appreciate it.
That'd be great. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Sister. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Review feral cats.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, pleased to be here this evening to discuss the issue of feral cats. Some time ago, there was a citizen who lives in our community that came to the City Commission and made some inquiries about ordinances that govern feral cats or cats in the community. And so I think that got pushed to the back burner for a little while because of COVID and some higher priority issues. But we agreed to have a conversation, I think, so we're back to have that. I'm pleased to be joined by Les Klein, who is the supervisor for the animal control facility. Les was incredibly helpful in putting together the information in the PowerPoint. And he will help me if we get stuck on a technical question. So I have a few PowerPoints I'd kind of like to go over to just frame the conversation. Generally, when I do these sorts of things, I like to start sort of at the very beginning in a global sense, define what the issue is, talk about some options, work through there, evaluate them. The staff is not really here to make a recommendation for any of the options yet. Just simply present them and have a conversation with you about that so you might have the opportunity to ask questions and think about it as we move forward. So we'll get started with feral cats. What's a feral cat? It's a couple of different definitions. I'm probably going to use the bottom one. A feral cat or a stray cat is an unknown domestic cat that lives outdoors, avoids human contact. It does not allow itself to be handled or touched, and is usually, remains hidden from humans. Feral cats may breed over dozens of generations and become an aggressive local apex predator in the urban savanna or bushland environments. Some feral cats may become more comfortable with the people who regularly feed them, but even with long-term attempts at socialization, they usually remain aloof and are most active after dusk. There's a little bit of a subcategory to it. There's essentially three kinds of problems. There are cats that are born in the wild and live predominantly out there. There are stray cats that have very likely been abandoned by somebody and then ultimately adapt to the wild. And then there are cats that are generally cared for by a human, but they're kept outside. And so the term "feral" is generally a generic term that sort of refers to all of those that, you know, generally cause problems in the neighborhoods. Okay? So in terms of that, that's my best guess about how to define what a feral cat is. Pretty generic in terms of all of the definitions. It's a long-winded deal here. I'm going to sort of skip to the bottom. The American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals defines community cats as either cats that were born and raised in the wild or domestic cats that have been abandoned or lost and turned feral in order to survive. So, you know, there's some sense about what we're talking about when we talk about a feral cat. A group of feral cats is referred to as a colony. Point that out because that'll be important in a few minutes. Some information, according to the National Feline Research Council, there's no rigorous estimates for the number of feral cats living in the United States. For years, various numbers have been quoted, but there's been little to no empirical evidence to back that up. The best available estimate suggests that the population is probably around 32 million, roughly 76%, of which live in an urban area. Okay? Our best guess here is there's probably somewhere between 1,000 to 1,500 community cats in the city of Leavenworth. But make no mistake, the word "guess" is important. That is a guess. We're doing the best we can to give you the sense of defining what the problem might be. Public health, I bring this up in terms of the function of animal control is to help in terms of public safety. And I'm trying to define for you the risk of a public health for a cat or a community cat or a feral cat is relatively low. The principal concern is rabies. And so if you sort of work your way down, the CDC has documented 115 cases of human rabies in the United States, most of which were attributed to contact with wildlife. Of the 26 cases attributed to a domestic animal, 25 were attributed to dogs. Just one human case since 1975 was attributed to contact with a cat. So in terms of rabies, the risk is incredibly low. So I would not define that necessarily as any sort of public health risk of great concern. Feral cat behavior. The animal control facility does get calls pretty weekly, weekly about feral cats being a nuisance in the neighborhood from residents. Some examples of that are getting into the trash, digging in the yard, urine and feces issues, climbing on cars, scratching hoods, trunks, that sort of thing. We do get those calls in the community. And those are essentially what folks get a little bit upset about when they're concerned about feral cats. In terms of feral cats, there's no ordinance in the city of Leavenworth that currently exists that deals with cats other than limiting the number. Section 8.4, maximum number of dogs and cats permitted per residence. So you can have a total of six, but only four each. You can have four dogs or four, and four cats, and then two of the other. But that's, the total is six, four each maximum per animal. That's the only ordinance that we have that governs the number of them. The way that we deal with feral cat complaints is a trap program. The animal control facility has traps. A citizen comes down, gets a trap, they pay a $25 deposit. They take the trap, they set the trap, and they capture the animal. And then they bring it back to the animal control facility, and we take it from there. Okay? Animal control does not pick up feral cats while on routine patrol. So if they are out and about, and they see a cat, they're not going to do it because it's almost impossible to catch one. You have to trap to do it that way. Okay? So there's some options moving forward. Again, we're not making recommendations, but these are some things that we've seen. You'll hear a lot of discussion, if you do any research, about a trap neuter and release program. A trap neuter and release program is essentially, you trap it, you are responsible for making sure that it gets spayed or neutered and vaccinated, and then you return it to where you trapped it from. The science behind that is it's more effective to let the colony die naturally through natural causes, either age or something bad happens to it, and it dies out. And that is the preferred method you will hear people talk about the most in what they say is the most effective way to deal with feral cats. I would argue that it's the most complicated and problematic of all of the issues, one of which would be expense. So if we were to do that, and we were to, we have an agreement with Hope Clinic that does all of that for us through regular measures, not feral cats. It's $75 to do that. I'm not entirely sure that the Hope Clinic, given how busy they are, would be able to absorb much more business from us and what they do for the community. They're pretty busy already. But if we were to do that, and if, for example, we use the number of 100 cats, that would be an added $7,500 expense to the animal control budget. If we had to go to the marketplace to do something like that, it's somewhere between $200 and $400 per animal to do that. And so obviously, 100 cats at that level would be closer to $20,000. The 100 cats is just a number that I'm using to make the math easy. If it were more than that, obviously, those numbers would go up. We'd need to probably have a conversation with you about more staff at the animal control facility, depending on how many we were talking about. You know, the starting salary for an animal control office, $40,000 plus benefits. You know, we'd have to have more traps, more food, more water, all of those things. My point is, none of those things are currently budgeted in the animal control budget. And so we would have to have those conversations with you. The other issue is that it does not solve the problem immediately. As we refer back to the complaints that the cats are getting in the trash, and they're doing that sort of thing, we're picking up the cat, we're arranging for it to be cared for, and then putting it back to where it is. And the idea is that it dies naturally at some point. So the problems that the person is complaining about are still going to exist. Okay? The other issue is that it's not universally accepted necessarily by everybody as the most effective method to dealing with feral cats. There's some pushback that it doesn't work the best. That's not the best way to do it. But you hear a lot of discussion about that. The bigger and much more important problem to me is I'm not entirely sure it would be legal for us to engage in a trap neuter and release program. The Kansas statute 216412, which is the cruelty to animal statute, this section says, no, it's a violation of cruelty to animal statute if you knowingly abandon an animal in any place without making provisions for its proper care. So we can pick it up and arrange for it to be fixed. But putting it back is a problem based on this statute, unless we were to have to go back and feed it and care for it. We've had a lot of conversations with the state folks that license us and regulate this. They recognize that this is a problem with the statute. I think they probably recognizes that it happens by some private groups. But we're not aware that there's any city in the state of Kansas that engages in a trap neuter and release program without being concerned about this. I think the last folks that were going to do it was Wichita. And I think their legal team had some concerns, and they changed their mind about that. So I'm not sure that the trap neuter and release program is necessarily a viable option anyway. I would be very concerned about that. It is my impression that we would be violating the statute if we put the animal back out there without provisions. Okay? Some other options. The crux of the problem here, mostly, in terms of the kinds of calls The crux of the problem here mostly, in terms of the kinds of calls that we get, is the kindness and generosity of people. We have a lot of folks, little old ladies that like to feed cats. They put a little bowl of cat food on their porch, and that attracts cats. And then those cats create problems and nuisances in the neighborhood. And so I don't know what the best way necessarily is to sort of solve that problem. But we'll talk about a few options if you were inclined to do that. Ordinance options that we have seen in other communities. A registration and vaccination plan. We could treat cats the same as dogs and require registration and vaccinations. Okay? I just provided some information about how many dogs we have and what we do now. It's ten dollars for registration of a dog that's altered, and twenty bucks for non-altered ones. But you must require proof of vaccination to get the dog registered. And there's a little over sixteen hundred dogs in the community. So if we were to do that, hypothetically speaking, the idea would be that if we were called to somebody that were taking care of cats, that were feeding them or whatever, and we caught them doing that, and we were able to define that they were doing that, we would make them require proof of registration and vaccination. And if they didn't do that, then we could issue them a fine. That would be some way that we would do that. Now, I don't speak for Carla and her office, but they do the bulk of the registering. And so I'd imagine she would have something to say about that amount of workload being added to her staff. Animal control does a little bit of that, but principally, we're talking about much more workload assigned, depending on how many we think would need to be registered and vaccinated and that sort of thing. Okay? Some other options, a leash law. The city of Lansing has a leash law, and if you get caught... Yes, sir. And if you get caught by the city of Lansing walking your cat without a leash, it's a one hundred and forty dollar fine.
How many fines have they, how many citations have they given in the last twenty-five years?
Specifically with Chief Wayman about that, but I'm going to guess the number's low.
Like zero or negative one?
I'll be glad to speak with Chief Wayman about that, but, and then they have an animal control officer right last.
Yes, I spoke to her, and it's not heavily enforced.
Yeah.
But they do, when they have a problem, they can use it.
Yeah, they can use it. But here, they also have the licensing and registration part in the city of Lansing. That would be an option to think about. Some other ordinance options. We currently have an ordinance eight dash two seventy-six that prohibits the feeding of wildlife. And if you get to the bottom of that, if we catch you feeding wildlife, you could get fined up to a thousand dollars. That is principally targeted at things like deer and stuff like that, where there's an inherent danger to doing that. We're trying to discourage you from doing that. But we could identify a feral cat as a wild animal and apply it to here if you were so inclined to think about that. The city of Parkville, I'm sorry, Platt City, Missouri, has an ordinance that has some permitting procedures for taking care of a colony of cats. I talked about that earlier. There's a permitting process where if you're going to do that, you are required to have a permit to do that, and I'm sure there's some regulations. And so that is probably their way of trying to combat that particular issue if you were inclined to do something like that. But we have that as an option. We could do what some communities do, and we can just entirely dispense with the pleasantries whatsoever and trap them and euthanize them as soon as they were available. We would be required to hold them for four days, which is the statutory requirement. We could do that. That's perfectly within the purview. I don't know how many we're talking about, but probably a lot. And so we would have to calculate the effects of that. There's some pushback to that. They call it the vacuum effect. Remember, the trap neuter and release program is designed to do it where it dies out naturally. This is intervention, we would intervene and do that. What they would push back with by saying that the colony of cats, if you were to do that, is simply going to breed faster and produce more cats, and it's not going to work as effectively as you think it's going to work. And so that's an option. But again, there's some pushback as to whether that would, how effective that would be. I'd imagine that would solve somebody's individual problem, because we would trap and euthanize the cat. But that is awful tough to do if we had to euthanize five hundred cats a year because we were doing that, so.
Chief or Officer Klein, what do we typically do now when you get a report of feral cats? I mean, what, I mean, do we get many of those reports, or?
We get them all the time.
Okay. And what do we do?
Basically, we tell them there are powers of the ordinance against cats that are free-roaming animal. Unless there's an excessive amount of them, we try not to intervene.
Could, and can the citizen who calls up and makes the complaint, I mean, can they get a trap, or?
Absolutely.
Right, that's what I talked about earlier, the trap program. They come down, they get, the citizen gets the trap, and then they use it and bring the animal and the trap back.
And then what happens to the feral cats at that point?
So we do a lot of work trying to adopt them, but let's be clear, feral cats, especially the wild ones, are not adoptable. They're just not. There's some circumstances in which we've given to barn cats, like folks who live out in the country. We give them away for free, come get them, because we're not interested. But sometimes we have to euthanize them simply because it's a...
The biggest issue for us for a feral cat is we're putting them in a two-by-two box. So you could imagine if you took a wild raccoon, put it in a two-by-two box, now you have to go in there every day and clean it. You wouldn't want to see my kennel attendant's arms when we get two or three feral cats in there. It's dangerous for us.
Sure, right.
And unfortunately, we'll hold them for thirty, forty days before we can get them fixed, find a barn home for them, and you're putting somebody in there every day cleaning that animal.
Yeah, the barn cats have predators, so, I mean, just from having lived in the country. They have predators, so.
They have a job, they have a job.
You've got all the wildlife after them. Is there any way you can put birth control in their food?
Less, can you do that?
There have been some cities that have tried that. I have not seen...
To me, that seems like the easiest thing, you know, wherever they're being fed.
Right.
I have not seen a lot of results yet. I think it's kind of a new...
I think that, I didn't know they ever did that, that's, it sounds interesting.
It'd be a serious?
I am serious.
Oh, what is that?
Yeah.
Birth control?
Birth control.
Sterilization.
Like a pill?
Sterilization.
But I would, you're free back to sort of the trap neuter and release thing. That solves the problem sort of long-term, because it prevents more breeding, and then the colony dies out naturally. It doesn't solve the immediate problem of the neighbors.
Yeah. But we're not solving it right now, so, I mean, to me, it seems like that would be something to look into.
I think the one thing we open up is when we take a cat out of a neighborhood, that's one thing. But when we bring that cat back and let it go, I think you're going to have a lot of people complain that animal control is out there letting cats go.
No, I mean, feed them in place. Why not feed them in place where they're being fed?
And give them the birth control?
Yeah.
It's an option. I don't know what the cost of it would be, I don't know the effectiveness of it.
I think we can do some, I think we can do some work on that, see some other communities that are doing that, because we have heard about that. That's unique and inventive, so I think we can do that. You know, in terms of the PowerPoint, to continue, I put some references up there, there's all kinds of stuff. If you type in feral cats on Google, there's a million different conversations and discussions going on. We're not the only community. If you look at the very bottom, Des Moines, Iowa, right now, is having a very similar conversation than we are. The Des Moines Register did a story here recently about it. There's a lot of conversations going on about stuff like that. So help yourself reading all that if you'd like. And then the other component that exists is part of the PowerPoint was a handout in advance of tonight. I have some more of them if you need. There are things that an individual person can do when they are concerned about their neighbor's cats. And if you look on the very back, some of the things that we identified as what folks call about, we've identified some solutions for them in terms of education. We try our best to do that when somebody calls, but we could certainly maybe ramp that up and do a little bit better job of trying to make sure we're communicating to the public. So for example, it identifies getting into your trash, there's some things that you can do. Spray a little bleach on there, that kind of stuff. Cats digging in your garden, there's a few options available for folks. Lounging in your yard, porch, or on your car, we talked about that. So there are things an individual person can do that are helpful. They do work in terms of deterrence from the general nuisances that we identified. The person that originally called, or originally came, Mr. Smith, I spoke with him today. I want to make sure he is, you know, his version of what's going on in his particular neighborhood is part of this conversation. So what we have is an instance where you have a person in the neighborhood that is taking care of cats that live outside. So he's taken advantage of our trap program. He came down, he got a trap a few times, and he's brought the animal to us. And then the owner of the cat comes down, they want their cat back, and we're compelled to give it back to them because they own the cat. And we don't have the authority to just universally, you know, take care of someone's animal. We have to have a legitimate reason to do that, it's dangerous, or nobody claims it, and that sort of thing. Now, the person does have to pay a fee, the ten-dollar kennel fee, you know, ten dollars per day. They do have to pay that to get the cat back. But in that particular case, that's what's going on there. It's been four or five times, and it hadn't done, hadn't solved the problem for him, so.
Do they have to show their registration, vaccination?
Some are microchipped, some are not. We are generally familiar...
Why, they could come in to collect your cat back.
Right.
Shouldn't you have to show your register?
No, no, no.
See, that seems like...
Registration or license.
That seems like the key right there.
I think, yeah, I think so too.
That was mentioned as a potential option. I mean, there's a cost to that, obviously, but that was outlined. Now, when you got finished conversing with Mr. Smith, what, I mean, because some of these things that you outlined here are some things that he can do. Because he was really concerned about, his initial complaint was, these are domesticated, they belong to, you know, a neighbor, and they're just coming over there and being a nuisance for him and his family when they're outside.
Right. So I don't want to speak for him, but my impressions were that he feels like the solution to that particular problem is an ordinance in some regard, whether it's the registration, licensing, the leash laws, that sort of thing. Because the current stuff that we have is not solving that individual problem. And then whether or not we move forward with something like that certainly would be something you'd have to consider. But yeah, there are individual things that folks can do to sort of try and deter that, the educational component about that. And they do, they do work. I'm sure it's quite frustrating for him, though, having to do it four or five times.
Two or three a year, right.
Yeah.
Well, I had a cat that showed up that was somebody dumped, and it was a pet.
Right.
And she just showed up there, and so I was feeding her. I had her for about four years, but she was, you know, licensed with the city, and she had her vaccination every year.
How was she licensed? We don't have a licensing program.
No, I mean, she was vaccinated. No, we don't, we don't, you're right. She was just vaccinated with the dogs. I took her to get vaccinated with the dogs. So I had her vaccination receipt.
Right.
But we did have some strays come show up, and they're always, you know, stay away, they'd fight, try to fight with her.
Right.
And so, and she would come in and out of the house. So anyway, I can understand people who are afraid that you're going to come and take my cat, that's my own personal cat that I take care of.
Right.
And so I think having this, having a registration would be good, or at least the very least showing that you've got them vaccinated, that you're taking, that you're showing that that's your cat and you're taking care of it, so.
I agree with that, because then you know, yeah, that the cat is yours and is vaccinated and is safe. So it's not, doesn't have any disease or anything.
And we trapped the feral cats, but I won't tell you what we did with them.
I will say, we have a program for dogs, and probably fifty to seventy-five percent of them that come in are not licensed or vaccinated.
Right.
Really?
Yeah, I was going to say, because that's sixteen hundred.
So we can force them then.
That's how many we have registered, yeah, that's how many we have registered, right.
Don't they get a fine, don't they get a fine for that, though?
They can get...
If they're not registered? Yeah, I think it should be the same.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to take an opposing view. I just don't see it as that big of a problem. I've lived in this town off and on for sixty years, and I agree that our feral cats, as any town has. And what we're looking at here is finding a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. I'm not saying it's completely nonexistent, but it's not something that I think government should get involved in at this point. We're not overrun with them. Responsible pet owners, of which there are many of them listening tonight, and probably many of us here, if you have a cat, you're probably getting it vaccinated. You take it to the vet once a year. Does everyone do that? Probably not, but responsible ones do it. I, you know, some people that have this problem, they don't really have a cat problem, they have a neighbor problem. And then, you know, they're asking us to come up with ordinances to solve their neighbor problem. Unfortunately, we can't do that. You know, good fences make good neighbors, and then obviously, with the cat, fence makes no difference. And making it illegal to feed cats, let's say we pick up some, I have a very good friend, and she's over ninety, and I believe she's feeding cats, and let's say we pick her up on a Friday afternoon before Memorial Day for feeding cats. Judge ain't available till Tuesday. You can let a ninety-one-year-old woman sit in jail till Tuesday? I know that's an extreme, but, you know, that's an extreme. But, you know, are we going to pick up people or cite people for feeding a cat? And cats are nocturnal animals, and they move about. I've got, you know, why aren't we trapping raccoons? I get, I don't put my trash out at night, on Monday night, I don't put it out till Tuesday morning, otherwise the raccoons are going to get into it. You know, they're just as big a problem. This is a solution looking for a problem, and I think it's a complete overreach in our part to even go this, go this. Responsible animal owners already do this. We put this in place, the responsible pet owners are still going to get their pet vaccinated, the irresponsible ones won't, and the feral cats will still exist. It's, until we're overrun, and I don't think we're ever close to that. I'm sure we can go to five or ten, you probably know five or ten places in town where you can find a colony. I never knew there were called colony, but a colony of feral cats. But, you know, I don't see people getting attacked, a little dog, another cat getting killed by one. They kill a lot of birds, but, I mean, that's, that's part of the life cycle, quite frankly. So that's where I am. I don't see the need to take any action on this, but I thank you for all of the information.
I do have another question. So the, you said we have, is it a thousand to fifteen hundred?
That's our best guess, yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay, is that, has that got higher over the years? Or has it about stayed the same?
So I'm going to sort of...
An estimate, you know, a guestimate.
I remember this topic being discussed in the very early nineties when I started at the police department. There was a much more aggressive way to handle it in the late seventies and early eighties by the police at night.
Lead poisoning?
Twenty-two rifles and such, you hear all kinds of stories, right?
Lead poisoning.
So I think this has been around for a while. I, we just don't have an accurate way to tell you whether it's gotten worse or better. My sense about it is it comes around every couple of years because a person is having a specific problem like this gentleman is, and then we have a little bit of conversation about it. But I just, I don't know that we could accurately answer that question, whether it's gotten worse or better.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thanks.
The strategy of animal control in the mid-nineties was much more aggressive. I mean, it was several hundred animals a year being euthanized, you know, sometimes as many as four or five hundred. And I don't think the public liked that very much. They wanted us to sort of change our strategy and work harder to do things like adoption and rescues and that sort of thing. And we've done that. I feel like this might take us a little bit backwards.
Okay.
Another point on euthanizing cats. Those of us that have had cats, we had a cat, it was an indoor cat, but I've had other cats growing up. And sometimes the cats go out at night, and they may be gone for two or three days, and the owner's not really concerned, and they show back up, you know, with a burden in its mouth or whatever it might do. But if you've got a four-day, you know, until you kill them or euthanize them, you know, Tabby or whatever the cat's name is, off for three or four days, the owner doesn't think much, and after about a week or so, they start wondering, and they call you and say, have you seen this cat? So, yeah, we euthanized him last night. I mean, you're going to get that with cats. With dogs, you're missing a dog overnight, you know, people are calling about them right away. Cats, they're not. And once again, I don't see it as that major of a problem.
And that's just the state and the home and the city, you've been amongst...
Right, I know, but you're going to still run into that situation.
Right.
Or not, just euthanizing.
No, I know, I know, I know.
So Chief, have you had any complaints about any cat bites?
We have had eight cat bites last year. We tracked that.
They're all in the high school. The high school cafeteria, you should get them.
Right. That's how many we've had. That's not, we've had, so we had a total of seventy-six bite cases last year, eight of which were cats.
How do you break up a cat fight? By the time you get there, it's over, isn't it?
Well, I was going to say, cats would tend to, even feral cats, I would think, would tend to run from you.
Correct.
Compared to a dog, would be more aggressive and come towards you and bite you. Cat, well...
When I, I think the belief of, or the preference of the Humane Society and others is that any cats that you own, you keep them in and not let them out.
Right.
Because then they do get into trouble, but, anyway, I let mine live outside. They wouldn't approve of that. That would cure some of that because...
That's their position, and other people have the position.
I know, right.
Well, Mr. Smith was, you know, he does have a specific problem, and I would tend to think that it's not, you know, that frequent a problem with other citizens within the city, but I don't know. But in terms of feral cats, is that, is, how do you characterize, is it a problem for, for the city as a whole? Or in your organization?
I'd probably take more cat complaints than I do dog complaints.
Really?
A weekly visit.
For the, mostly feral cats, right?
Feral cats, cats in my yard, cats in my garden.
Loose cats in general, yeah.
If somebody calls you about a cat in your yard, do you dispatch a animal control officer and go to that yard and look for it? No, because it's not going to be there when you get there, right?
There's no, it's a free-roaming animal, there's no ordinance in the city of Leavenworth.
Yeah.
You know, we get a lot of complaints, you bait somebody for their dog running, and he says, what about my neighbor's four cats? You know, we take a lot of complaints, but they're not ones that come up, you know, as far as you know.
You're very seldom the hero among many people. More people get mad at you than say, great job today.
Let me follow up on that, Commissioner Griswold. So in terms of, it is a nuisance problem, it is not a public health problem, there's not great risk to the community. It is probably annoying the daylights out of people when they're experiencing it, like Mr. Smith. But in terms of a public health issue or something like that, it is not a problem.
Thank you.
And I think some of the odd noises when we tell them we're not going to do anything.
Right.
Doesn't usually make people...
Yeah.
Right, right.
And other police departments that, I mean, we don't, we don't really know. The leash law in Lansing, we're just anecdotally, they don't seem to be probably enforced. How do you enforce that? I mean, that is a question in terms of how a police department, you know, control.
Cats are so difficult, because there's so many areas that I can go to, and there's four or five houses in the road that have food out. And it's, it's a neighborhood cat.
Sure.
Right.
Well, do you write every one of them a ticket?
Right, right.
It's hard to pinpoint who owns the cat. You got a dog, yes. Most people want their dog back, and they'll say, it's my dog out there. So it's a, it's a more difficult situation.
Lansing has a leash law, though, with the cats. You know, I drive through Lansing a lot, I've yet to see somebody walking their cat on a leash, but maybe it does happen. I'd have to be more observant, I guess.
Well, would that leash law apply to the situation with Mr. Smith, though? I mean, it's not somebody walking, it's just letting their cats go next door and do whatever they're doing. So I would think the leash law would apply to those cats.
If you had a leash law, you could, if you could prove that person owns a cat, you could have...
That's what I thought, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for the information.
Yeah, thank you for all the information. Any other comments or questions or?
What do you think, Madam Mayor?
Do you want to hear from the community on this or?
I'm going to bet you're going to hear about this. I'm sure we'll hear about it, but I, my position is I don't think we take any action. I don't think there's any action to be taken. I think any action to be taken has more negative deleterious effects than doing nothing at this point.
Well, I, yeah.
I think it'd be, we're just pretty overthinking it.
I can honestly say if we got 30, 40 feral cats in one swoop, you know, one set traps, my employees are going to quit. They're going to knock us to the window. I'm sorry.
There are some, there are some legitimate management issues associated with that, that we would, we would have to think about. Space and locations within the facility, equipment to protect the workers, trying to wrestle a cat that's feral, that we've got the big welder gloves, we would need to do some more stuff.
Chainmail all the way up to your shoulder.
Right, yeah, we would have to do...
I don't see where that's helpful, you know? I really don't have it to...
Right.
Part of it would be the education though, right? I mean, can you do a little bit more with education in terms of...
That's my view now, I think, is maybe ramping up our educational component in terms of saying, if you're having these types of problems, here's some way to solve that. It's not terribly expensive to do that. There's a few things that you can do that are relatively inexpensive that can help you solve the problem. The trap thing, the trap program we does, it does work, we do have folks. It's the, it's the coming back and getting, well, I own that animal and that. You know, the fee adjustment is an option for $10 a day, keeping in mind that that applies to everybody. So if we, you know, we do that, that would apply to everybody, not just the cats that we keep. So consequences for everything. But that would be my view right now would be, we focus more on the educational component and see if we can help continue what we're doing. And then, I don't know, maybe over the next few months, if you hear quite a, maybe we could come back with some information.
This is a lot of good points and a lot of this works.
What about a PSA from your office, from animal control, you know, article in the paper every now and then, you know, kind of discouraging people feeding feral cats? Not the long arm or the law is going to come out and get them, but, you know, just, you know, explain why it shouldn't be done and it's just being a good neighbor for a lot, you know, it's not a public health issue. I don't want to start alarming people, say, hey, we've got a public health issue. We don't. But it's just being a good neighbor.
We try that a lot and the first response is, are you telling me to let that animal start?
Well, I know, people will say that, but a cat is pretty industrious. I mean, there's a lot of birds, there's a lot of birds out there that are going to eat...